Okay.
Good evening, welcome to the City of West Miami Planning and Zoning Board Meeting of January 28, 2020. Members present are Hibeto Gonzalez.
Here.
Eugenio Gonzalez.
Yes.
Alberto Lurido.
Here.
Diana Rio.
Here.
Myself, Joe Paz. Also present is Juan Pena, Planning and Zoning Director and Jose Villalobos, City Attorney. It is 7:30 PM for the record. Ms. Pena?
All who will testify accept attorneys, will you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I solemn swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth.
I do. First item on your agenda is the minutes from the meeting of October 22, 2019.
I make a motion that this minutes will be approved.
I second my motion.
On the motion, and I'm gonna call just the members that were present during that meeting, Eugenio, I'm sorry, Hibeto, Alberto Lurido.
Yes.
Diana Rio.
Yes.
And I vote yes. So the minutes have been approved. Okay, next item on your agenda is a public hearing, Agenda Item Number One. Special use permit number 2019-005, property address 6550 Southwest 13th Street. Applicants Rainier Prado Cabrales, Oreste Prado Cachorro, and Isma Cabrales Diaz. Applicants are requesting a special use permit for land development for the property which is zone R2 duplex, and the applicant is requesting to redevelop the parcel to allow a two-family, one-story attached building to the existing structure. Ms. Pena, this is a special use, but there's no variance or anything that are needed? That's correct.
Uno de ustedes tiene que hablar. Nombre y dirección. Nombre y dirección primero. Nombre y dirección.
Rainier Prado, eh, la dirección 6550 Southwest 13th Street.
Okay.
Estamos haciendo el duplex por la familia crecido y y queremos arrendar la casa.
We're doing the duplex, we're doing the duplex because the family has grown and the property has the ability to become a duplex, so we're adding the addition to make it a duplex.
Tenemos que mostrar el, el drawing, lo...
No, ellos lo tienen. Espera si ahí a ver si tienen alguna pregunta.
Alright. Ms. Pena, the actual addition's only gonna be attached by just that small little section to the main house, correct? That's correct. Okay. Kinda odd, but I guess... Parking, and do they have sufficient parking? Yes, they do. Ms. Pena, this is a public hearing? Yes, sir. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. It is 7:34 PM. Should anybody from the public wish to approach the podium and speak on this item, please go ahead and do so. And if any comments, questions from the board, go right ahead and... Just for the record, we notified 500 radius feet around the property and published it in the Miami Herald. Alright. Neighbor section. And the shed is gonna remain there, the utility shed? The exist, eh, la casita de matab que tienen se queda.
Eh, sí.
Yes.
I have a question on the parking, on the approach and on the parking on the site. Is this approach currently there? I guess it's number 25, existing? So all of this existing, all of this driveway is existing?
Yes, ma'am.
To this extent?
Yes, ma'am.
And this complies with the percentage regulations that we...
For concrete coverage, yes.
It does?
Yes. Okay, any further comments or concerns? And for the record, no members of the public, aside from the applicant, approached the podium to speak on this item. So I'll go ahead and close the public hearing now. It is 7:36 PM. Any additional comments from the board?
I would like to see a little bit of improvement on the landscaping in the front, particularly on the sides, on the interior sides. One side appears to have, I don't know, maybe three feet, it's not dimensioned, but it appears to have like three feet on the on the west side. But there's absolutely nothing on the east side, and there's a fence there.
There's only, and there's only one approach, Juan?
Yes.
There's two approaches, it's just that that part of the road there terminates into the apartment buildings. So the actual approach is made out of asphalt, but it's never been defined as the one to the east. So it's like a shared approach? That's correct, for the building and for the house.
Oh, I see.
Ms. Pena, does the existing house have shingle tile, asphalt shingles now on the roof? No, the existing house has cement tile roof. And the plans say shingles for the addition? I saw asphalt shingles. Let's ask them.
El techo que le van a poner a la adición es de shingle? La casa ti, la casa existente tiene shingle, tiene cementado?
Shingle, okay. It has shingles. Asphalt shingles? Yes. Both have asphalt shingles.
Okay. Gracias, thank you.
Juan, but there's no, there's no other approach on the west side, right?
No, sir. Ms. Pena, if I may ask, the recommendation that you made then does not apply then regarding the cement tile to match existing, since the house has existing? Correct, that would be the... So we can strike that? It would be the shingle tile roof. Anybody care to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve with the staff's recommendations.
Would you like to incorporate the additional landscaping? Can we do that?
Well, no, because this is existing, and in reality, there's a fence, a concrete fence on that side if somebody wants to...
Yeah, there's a CBS block wall.
At that. And really, it appears that it's only about 15 feet, 15.5. So that's a little tight as it is, so...
Okay, there was a motion to approve.
And I will second that motion.
And it was second. Who made the motion, I'm sorry?
I did.
Okay.
And I second it.
On the motion, Hibeto Gonzalez.
Yes.
Eugenio Gonzalez.
Yes.
Alberto Lurido.
Yes.
Diana Rio.
Yes.
And I vote yes. It's been approved, aprobar.
With the...
Está probado hasta el, el febrero 10, 14, no, 19, que va a la comisión. Es el segundo paso. Okay? Gracias.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item is public hearing, Agenda Item Number Two. Property address 1090 Silvania Boulevard, Solomar Holdings LLC, 2500 Southwest 79th Court. Applicant is requesting a special use permit for the construction of a two, of a new two-story house on the property located at the same address, four-bedroom, four-bath house with a double car garage. Property is own, single-family residential, special use number 2020-001. Also, for the record, we also notified 500 radius feet around the property and published it in the Herald.
Good evening, board. My name is Carlos Triari. I'm the attorney of Solomar Holdings. Law office is at 2301 Northwest 87th Avenue, Suite 501, Doral, Florida. I have with me the owner's rep, Jorge Reyes, and also have, also have the architect Maxime Sider from JSA Group Inc.
Quick questions, is this a spec house?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You'd like to appoint you with the site and the property? You really don't have the site and the site plan, and maybe Max will help me and we'll put it up real quick?
This is like a prominent location, so hopefully it's something like...
Well, that's what we wanna do, and I thank you.
It's a very high profile, right, Ms. Pena?
Yeah.
It's like a prominent little intersection. That it is. Silvania, anything on Silvania Heights.
Well, that's why we thought Silvania Heights merited something nice. And that's what we did, and it's, remember, it's private money, which means we're going in there and that lot's paid for now. So we went in there and we purchased the property and we sat and thought about it. There was a house that went in there and sought a variance before, we bought it like that, and when then we thought about it, we said, no, 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 no. We'd like to put something that's a little better on that. And the reason being is that, number one, it's on Silvania, which is a very, which is a boulevard, and it's a very nice boulevard right around that area. Most of the houses there are well-kept. It's near the pump station, but the pump station told, somebody told me is a park, which is real interesting. But anyways, it means they've done a nice job of concealing it, but nonetheless, there's a park. So the area there, the houses are well-kept, and they have nice lots. So we thought we'd put a new house on there that would merit the site. Now, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to do something new, and actually, it's been done a little bit before in the city, but we're trying to do something a little better. Someone put up a spec house before on 16th Street on about 65th, and that's sold. So there's been acceptance in the market. Now, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to do something relate, because the site is so close to Coral Gables, we're trying to do some, something similar to what's been accepted in Coral Gables. Most homes in Coral Gables now are two stories. They sell 3,000 to 4,000 square feet. They tend to be four bedrooms, four bath, because people entertain, because when you have the color of my hair, you have kids that come home, and the kids now have others, and then you have green kids and different things. It's a two-story home, because when they come for those reasons, you really don't want them on the ground floor with you. If you wanna go up, you can go up in half, half-time. The site is large enough to accommodate a pool in the future, but we feel it's a, we feel we're gonna do something very good. It's gonna be a two-story house, it's gonna have impact windows, it's gonna have a barrel tile roof, and we'd like your approval. We'd like to get going with it whenever it gets approved.
Do you mind turning it?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Max, I apologize. I'm looking at it, he hasn't done that. I am so sorry. I'm very...
You have an elevation there?
Color elevation?
By the way, thank you. I'm sure Max's, we mentioned Max's design, work with us on the board.
There you go, that's what we wanna see.
I'll show you the elevations and so forth.
By the way, for the record, for the record, what color is your hair, sir?
Say what? Let's get a little break. Bye, break.
That's beautiful design. If you don't mind pivoting so the camera can catch it, since it wasn't seen earlier, the elevation, you only had the site plan?
Picture.
Because the meetings, yes, sir, the meetings are recorded. You gotta do the Vanna White thing. That way, it comes out for the public's view. Ms. Pena, is this gonna be one of the largest, if not the largest, homes in West Miami now? Well, it's close to the, it's actually one of the largest, it's 4,000 square feet. However, the, the next one that you have on you is, behind you is also a big house, existing big house. And then the duplexes that you approved recently, each one is 3,000 square feet, so it's up there. Okay. I think that's a beautiful design. I don't have any more questions, but it is a public hearing, so we will open the public hearing. It is 7:45 PM. If any members from the public wish to speak on this item, please approach the podium and do so. Okay, let the record reflect that no additional members from the public chose to speak on this item, so the public hearing is now closed. Any questions, comments from the board?
Would a pool and pool deck be able to be accommodated on the site without any variances?
Sure, well...
Without any variances?
Well, wait a minute, let me say this to you. You know...
This is something that took me by, that took us by surprise, because we bought the site and we were totally convinced that we could put a two-story house on there. We come to find out, we couldn't. So that's why we're seeking your approval. We don't think, I mean, Max can help me, because we, we worked on the site and what we've done. We don't think there's gonna be any variances necessary for a pool or a gazebo, for one matter. Remember, look, the problem that we had with that site is that it's 9,800 square feet, 9,833. It's kind of a large site, right? It's, let's say, a quarter of an acre, an acre's 40,000 square feet, so it should be a quarter, right? But it's an irregular site.
Right.
So there's places where it's 100 feet long, and it's, and it's narrowest is 25 feet. So what we looked and what we thought about is, put this site plan up and turn that up to him, please.
Because we did. Look, remember, I gotta sell it to someone at the end of the day, for support and business and so forth, so we wanna make sure we don't do anything that's, you know, be objectionable to whoever the, the unknown purchaser is. But we thought we'd pull the pool in right here. Now, if you look, the house is only on the sidewalk, so it won't bother the neighbor here or anything. So we thought about it, and we thought we could have pulled an L-shaped pool here, but we thought whatever gazebo we had, we'd have to put here. But that we address it later, I gotta tell you, I'm not a pool person, so I don't know. But if a purchaser wanted one, we'd address it at that point in time, but I don't, I don't have that answer.
I think, I'm not a developer, but the person that's in the market for a house like that will probably want a pool, so it would be a good idea to be contemplating maybe a pool in the future. There's a similar lot on...
Are you similar to her metrics?
Yeah, that's true. There's a similar lot on Silvania and 12th Street where, where they put a pool, and it's similarly shaped.
And I think the pool that fits there is like a kidney pool.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, a little L-shaped kidney pool. And it is gonna have impact windows and...
We'd like to put CGI, which is a bigger product.
Okay.
We, we put that before in the Gables, and we, we see, we like the way it looked.
I, I've seen you in the Gables before.
That's the kinda part, the, 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 uh, PGT doesn't work all because the, the project, the project that it injects, that it has between the mullions and so forth. We like to put CGI, so it looks, if you look, it's, it's...
There you go.
Look, we tried to be real careful with this, because what we're trying to do is how the sun hits, hits the house and it goes in, so it has an open concept of the field, so it's cramped, you know, it's gonna be 24 feet high, so it's gonna be nice. So if you have a 20-foot Christmas tree, it's gonna look good. So we're trying to put impact windows and so forth. Yeah, we're gonna try to, try to do a quality part.
Yeah, the foyer is, we're going, very nice.
I just feel like, since you have a blank canvas right now, and now is the opportunity to make sure that you do not need a variance, and since it is, you know, textbook classic lot to become a variance possibility, I wish to, for you to think about the placement of a pool without having to come back to us for a variance, be it for the, for the water line of the pool, or for the deck of the pool, or for a cabana for the pool. So...
Okay, but that's in the future, that may not happen.
That may or may not happen, but I just wanna be clear that, you know, now it would be the time to, to consider that.
I would say this to you.
The young man's taking the architect as he took notes, so...
I'm not taking all the notes.
Yeah, he's already got a design in mind.
From my perspective, a developer, what I'm saying to you is that there's a preference for pools and a preference not for pools. Some people like it, some people don't like it.
Correct.
Of course, of course, of course.
Yeah.
Well, it may work and may not work. I don't know, but I'd like to cross that bridge when and if we get here.
Yeah, the person that bought the one at 6330 16th Street didn't care for a pool.
Now, what I, now, added to that, you see, it goes to different things. They may want a fence in the front. What they did at 15th Street is they actually put a fence with gates.
Right.
Smaller motors and, well, it was very nicely done. They may want that, because that is a corner home.
Right.
So, we don't know.
Personally, I think it's a beautiful, beautiful house, beautiful design. If I, if it were to be approved and built, and I won the lottery, I'd be knocking on your door. That being said, any, any comments, motions from the board? There is one condition that I put on it, is that north face of the balcony to have glass block from top to bottom, so that there is no view to the rear of the, whatever possible view could be to that west block, rear yard.
Which one's that?
Hank, can you put it on an elevation?
Sure.
What side? Is it on this side? Southbound.
So you, that balcony right here?
Yeah.
All block, the last block, the end of the... Well, make glass, glass block or block, it was what I'm thinking, is what the window calculation's gonna be? Whatever you would. Okay.
Like a little wall?
Which windows are those? The ones in the master bedroom?
You know, glass block, I, you know, look, when you go through these plans getting approved, it's got to do with the calculations, because now you have...
But on, on which, I'm sorry, on which, on which windows do you want glass block?
Because it's a balcony.
Yeah, the balcony, yeah.
The balcony, that's right.
To afford privacy.
Oh, I thought you, okay.
Or it could be a screen of some sort, right? Like an aluminum screen or something?
Yeah, or maybe not glass block, but something...
But I don't wanna do it around a block, they're all supposed to a block, but I don't know, I think...
Whatever you wish.
No, that's, that's what, Ms. Pena's saying that it's up to you.
You don't wanna view.
It can't have a view.
Some type of, some type of a screen.
To conceal the view.
Right, right.
Permanent, a permanent structure. Solid wall, glass block, whatever you wish. Okay?
Okay.
You like the screen, we're, okay, fine.
Right? Any further comments, questions from the board, motions?
I make a motion to approve with the exceptions that Juan just pointed out.
Okay, there's a motion with the conditions stipulated by the city staff. Is there a second?
I second one.
Okay, there's a second. On the motion, Hibeto Gonzalez.
Yes.
Eugenio Gonzalez.
Yes.
Alberto Lurido.
Yes.
Diana Rio.
Yes.
And I vote yes, been approved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, board.
Your final approval was on February 19, before the city commission. Those stay here.
Well, we, we need to bring them, excuse me, that's the point, do we need to bring them or again?
We will have them here.
Good, thank you.
We're saving you carrying them, plus they're part of the public record now.
Will we, is it fine to leave it there, or do you need?
Yeah.
No, no, we got it, don't worry.
It's part of public record.
In fact, they may adorn city hall or some other place.
You're a good advocate.
Oh, thank you. Let's hope I'm a good show.
Next item on your agenda tonight is variance hearing, Agenda Item Number Three. Property address 1820 Southwest 62nd Avenue. Applicant requests a variance of the front setback of the lot determination for the property at 1820 Southwest 62nd Avenue. The Southwest 62nd Avenue side of the property measures 130 feet as the front setback of the property, instead of the existing front setback, which is on 18th Street measuring 124 feet. The applicant wishes to restore the Montgomery House to the original design with the addition of a two-car garage on the 18th Street side with connection to the house and the same original design of the house from the 1920s on the exterior side of the garage. The property is own, R1, single-family home, and its variance number 2020-01-028. And the prop, area was notified, 500 radius feet mailing. This is a, a house that's been declared by Miami-Dade County as a historical site, so they did go before the Miami Architectural Review Board and was approved for their modifications. You have a copy of the resolution.
Yes.
Welcome.
Good evening, and I'm Jose Navarro, I'm the property owner.
And Alyssa?
This is Alyssa Kriplin with Macwork at 2455 Southwest 27th Avenue, Miami. I won't get into too many of the architectural details unless you would really like to get into it, but the historic board was very happy with that this was gonna be restored. The Montgomery House dates back to 1926, and definitely harkens back to the Merrick House and that, and this era. And to that end, the major features that we're proposing to restore are to bring back the pitched roof, which was original to the house, and which was turned into a trafficable terrace. So we're gonna restore it back to the pitch and put standing seam metal roof as it was originally. In addition, we're going to replace all the windows with the original configuration, which were double hungs with no mountains, and of course, those will be impact. And then we have two additions, if you like, one is a...
The addition of more covered porch down the side that faces this really nice generous yard, and then the other is to put a small garage, it's 20 by 25, so it's a two-car garage with just a small amount of additional storage space. The last thing I expected that we would need to be asking for on a 16 and a half thousand square foot lot would be a variance. So, but this historic home is located pretty much smack in the middle, which made putting this garage a little bit of a puzzle to then take advantage and make sure that the rest of the yard still makes sense. So the house very clearly faces onto 62nd Avenue. If the front door is on that side, the proportions are faced that way, it's, it's very clear when you go past which way it is, is the front. Unfortunately, the zoning code states that the narrow side of the frontage is technically considered the front, which made this, the frontage had required 25-foot setback, and then this one had only 15. We looked at it, trying to get over in this part of the house, but it really disturbed that front facade and programmaticly couldn't make a whole of a sense. This is all of the living area wrapped around on this southeast corner, and the service entrance and the laundry and the mudroom and so on are along the back of it. So what we looked at doing was, this is only six feet difference from one side to the other, so we were, we were off by six feet. What we're looking at and what we're trying to do is, we have kept the setback on this side as though that was frontage and that was side. We wanted to stick with the neighborhood legibility of setbacks and front yards and so on, so we're not asking for a variance for the front yard that we believe is not in keeping with the neighborhood. So we keep 15 feet off 18, and then, of course, the original house is setback about 40 feet from, from the frontage on 62nd. This curb cut does exist, the fence currently covers it over, but there is a, an apron that's already paved there. So although it does feel like a whole lot of aprons and access, it's a pretty big size, 16 and a half thousand square. And the board was very excited with the proposal, they had no issue with the location of the garage, and I did explain to them that it was gonna be continued upon approval here, obviously. Since we were gonna require a variance for setback. So we really keep the 15. We are taking advantage of it being allowed to be three feet from the front lines, it's a detached, it's a detached garage. Assuming pool does meet its required setbacks, so the only variance we're requesting is for the location of the garage.
Okay, but may I ask, the county historical board approved this preliminary plan you're presenting to us today, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, and so you are the, you're the new owner, right? You just recently purchased this property?
Technically, my wife is the owner, but yes.
Okay, welcome to West Miami, that's... Personally, I say a lot of personal stuff. I'm really glad to see this property restored back to its former glory. We don't have a whole lot of historic properties in West Miami, unlike our neighbors across the other side of Red Road. And I think it's phenomenal what you're doing, and it really is. I've always loved this property since I first saw it, and I've seen it inside on the MLS and everything, so familiar, but I'm sure maybe everybody here has. It's a gorgeous property, it really is. And remember, you're not the, oh, you mentioned your wife is the owner. Your wife's not the owner, and you're not the owner, you're the current caretaker of the property, as Mrs. Architect can explain how real estate functions and all that. This is a public hearing, I'm going to open the public hearing. It's eight o'clock PM. Should any members of the public wish to approach the podium and speak on this item, please do so now.
I wish it would allow the city to show your house as a showcase.
We'll see when, when we finish the renovation.
For the record, I am going to close the public hearing. There are no members present from the public to speak.
I want to make a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
When I moved to West Miami in nineteen sixty-seven, I tried to buy that house.
Wow.
Really? I could afford it, I will tell you the price, because we will laugh, we will laugh.
Wow, wow.
Yeah, I love that house, I love that house.
I have a question, just a historic question. Was that house built before the hurricane nineteen twenty-six or after?
That's a really good question. It doesn't actually have the month in there, so they, the owner had eighty acres of roads around here, but as to whether it was a, they have post-destruction, I don't know.
Yeah, this was actually orange groves, are your, are your... Houses, where your houses are, it was all orange groves to that mansion there.
I know that they suffered a lot of damage with Andrew.
No, the...
I remember that.
It received minimal damage, that, that house has sixteen-inch blocks. It's a, it's, it's a storm shelter.
So it is CBS block with the Elytic limestone facade attached to it.
The railing upstairs and the porch, there used to be a railing there and I heard Andrew and then they never put it back.
They never put it back.
Those have, like, my house right now have a concrete block with three, three cells block.
Yeah, the reason why I asked that is the same year they built Miami Senior High School, on an alumni from Miami High, and sometime I heard that when they built Miami High, they were also building the house, so I, I don't know, that's...
It could be.
It could be.
Well, if you know the murals in Miami High, I have pictures of them, Denham Fink did all the architect rendering drawings to market the Gables for George Merrick, and did the mural that's currently in City Hall, Coral Gables, Denham Fink, and he did those murals and they were covered by previous renovations, and they've been restored, and I can show you pictures if you haven't been lately. I'd been there about four months ago, I was impressed, hadn't been there in about thirty years. That's, I, I mean, I commend you for restoring it, I don't have any other comments or comments on the property, if anybody...
No, I'd just like to say that it is, hands out, my favorite house in West Miami, and I'm glad somebody like you with so much experience is now the owner and will be restoring it to its full glory, so...
I, I'm sorry, are you, you're the...
I'm the owner.
You're the arch...
She's the architect.
Okay, okay, I thought she was the owner there too, I thought you mentioned...
Way back.
It sounds like you did your research, you did your homework, you did a great plan, and just getting approved from the county historic board probably in and of itself is a big hurdle that you accomplished.
I was very lucky to have owners who were interested in doing all the right things. You know, sometimes, you know, we're not adding any square footage to the house. For example, we're not trying to change the shape of the roof away from any historic, so easiest board hearing I've had in a long time.
Wow. Okay, any additional comments?
Well, I'd like to make a motion to accept the, the agenda item number three as presented to us.
I second.
Okay, on the motion, Hibeto Gonzalez?
Yes.
Eugenio Gonzalez?
Yes.
Álvaro Lurido?
Of course.
Diana Rio?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How fast could you work?
Yeah.
Well, we, we purchased it in September and we did a leaseback for one year?
Yeah.
With the folks that previously owned it, so in September first, we're, we'll get started.
Right. One question, Mr. Penna, is, can the city put some, since you mentioned the showcase for the city, Mr. Avialovas mentioned, was it? Can the city put a plaque of some sort or something, agreeable, something with the owner, you know, the historic side?
I will, I will bring it up with the mayor and let her know. I'm sure she would be a hundred percent on board.
We have a lot of visitors going to the Rebecca Sosa Community Center and...
Well, they were actually going to go brown at first, and then they saw our building and they say, well, boy, we got to go a different color.
We figured we'd have a lot of people trying to check in for tenants.
Yes.
Oh, I see.
Not me on the front door. So we can go dark right, just so that you can tell that it's...
The different.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or, before we close the meeting? Hey, the, the city of West Miami Planning and Zoning Board Meeting of January twenty-eight, two thousand twenty is now adjourned. It is eight oh five PM for the record. Good night.